Gentlemen, when you're ready, you may begin.
So first thing, just to give you more insight, so this is a typical, if you're Benham Elementary School, then they seem a little bit familiar. So we start with orientation. So this is orientation of the school district. So I didn't see elementary school, the furthest away from the other buildings. But the district office moves to the high school. But this will get into more, we'll get into this more when we get into the incident command. So the situation, so why are we doing this? Why do we have to do this? And it's because we want rare staff students for any kind of emergency situation. And these can range from power outages, evacuations, lockdowns, bomb threats. We want to make sure that everyone is all on the same page and who's first responder. So this type of plan gets everyone on the same page. This district plan is meant to guide the building level emergency response plans, which are in much more detail. So as a comparison, the district has five coordinations, our building levels are above board, so it's in much more detail, building two specifics of how we handle each type of emergency. So mission, it's the heart of our district. So the mission for the safety plan, so it's to, in an emergency situation, North Rose Will, Kids Under the School, district priority prioritizes priorities. First, destruction property and restoration to normal activities. The overall mission for the district, which we say at times, is show the vulnerable, vulnerable defendant, product, progress. Next is the execution of the safety plan. To execute effective and timely decisions, actions that prevent harm, protect lives, and property, mitigate damages, restore order, and recover. The actual plans for each building are submitted in part. Tom Ryan and Alford. The building level or emergency response plan is created to best prepare these buildings for any potential violence emergency. Life drills and trains are executed within each building, including go home early, lockdown, lockout, shelter in place, pull in place, and evacuation. Statement, it's 12 girls that reached the school, four of them must be locked. We've had discussions and we're going to implement a few more lockdowns for this. It's a command system, there's enough training for all staff. So admin logistics. So as far as administration, so building emergency response plans, there is an outline courses of action to account for all of the things. So that is such an emotional part, it's accountable for all of the evacuation and lockdown. We want to make sure that we're accountable for everybody, we don't have anyone missing. So that, each building emergency response plans outlines the whereabouts, accountability of all, all personnel. As far as logistics, building maps, evacuation routes, primary or secondary routes, staging areas, and as well as what to do with each type of emergency is outlined for staff, it's on the, it's on the menu. The plan is also in their identified folder, which has all that information. And some, if they're new to the district, they will be, you know, going to the admin and make sure that they understand what to do in each type of situation. So make sure that they know the information or define it so that everyone's on the same Last thing, command system. So, there goes communication. So, primary type of communication would be a rather stopper. That's a map that admin deals with and we have direct access to district local administration as well as first responders. Staff there over the radio, and teacher over the cell phone. When I say cellphone, that means calls, text messages, things like that. So we don't want administration bogged down by text messages, cell phone calls, things like that. That's been cleared, that control. And last thing, command. So the incident command system, this is the core of our incidents department. So, the interim principal versus principal will be the incident commander. So, the first responder would be for, if it's external superintendent business, incident commander arrives at the scene. So, like the orientation said, which it showed, it's, admin would be incident commander, the interim incident commander at the scene, at the school, compared to get a longer handle, get all the control. So until there would be, the interim principal or as a principal would be the incident
Does the, do you actually really utilize your students, their, their, that tracking function for a situation like this where we get that by impulse? Or if we're inside, I'm not sure that it has a tracking or has a way of alert, but I'm not sure about that.
You referring to Barrick Square?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that it does as well. But I mean, there's going to be another app that we utilize in terms of, from a safety standpoint as well, that we're bringing back up and having the administration become familiar with first, when we start going out, it's part of our actual practice within drills.
I have a question. With the incident command system, at what point does the county and sheriff and emergency prepared to take over operations at this?
Well, we'll go back to the initial signal, the primary and the red responder app. That signal also goes out to us, yes, or, we are on radio, part of the school, and also goes on dark events that shares on. So, first we've had, it's been happening from pretty much scale this year, and immediately we have all the resources.
But they take control of the situation and our people are
If it's a criminal act. It's a criminal act, but a law enforcement, big legal, it's fire, fire laws, maybe, unless it's a mission. We, as yes, or others, will often be, obviously we get everywhere along, so for a moment, some of the schools have to be in charge, but should we get there, we'll take over and then that goes on with the government.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the public that zooming in? Okay, Mr. Fuller, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I was, I served on the committee, and I was very impressed with all the detail that's gone into making the plan. I think there's always something that might be missed, but boy, I think they've done a great job.
Thank you for that. It's going to bring our public hearing to conclusion. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, and welcome to our meeting tonight. I will call meeting to order, and we will stand for the flag. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Jason and Linda, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda? A motion is carried. Before we move on to the presentations, we certainly want to welcome all of our new teachers, new teachers to the district here that are here tonight. We are delighted to have you with us, and we met you a little before the meeting, so that was a nice thing to be able to do. And as the board, thinking for the board, we wish you the very best. Would the new teachers to the district just stand up so we can, so that we can give you a round of applause? Good night, Seth. We know you've been here all day, working away, and you're returning tomorrow to continue. So I wish you good night, and happy sleeping, so you've got a great day coming tomorrow. Good night.
Yeah.
The first order, the next, is a presentation. Mr. Leslie, I believe you're going to present the new course.
John, I'd like to present a new course for the upcoming school year. The course would be a global history and geography to reinforce course. It would reside within the social studies department, primarily for 10th grade students, who would earn one credit for successful completion of the course. Students taking this course by the end of the year would develop an understanding of concepts and key ideas from the theory. They'd analyze primary and secondary sources, they'd apply just primary skills practices, and they would investigate bias, perspective, and point of view. These are skills that will help them academically, but they'll also help them in life. Looking at the board bullets specifically, developing skills where they can analyze things and develop their own ideas from things that they read in here is a skill that will take them a long, long way. The course aligns with the New York State social space framework, which really prioritizes three shifts, which you can see there. These shifts represent a change in the way of thinking. It moves from memorization of dates, events, figures, to a deeper way of thinking, where students are analyzing information, they're synthesizing information, and they're looking at things from a broader perspective, and how that can have an impact on things coming after it. So, there is a current global history and geography two course. The honors course is a more rigorous version of that course, designed for students who want to challenge themselves, they want to dive deeper into the content, and look at it in a more global perspective. The course culminates in a Regents exam, which students would take at the end of the year, and they would not only learn the course content, but also have, as mentioned before, the opportunity to really improve critical reading, writing, speaking skills, a lot of other skills that will help for college readiness. So many of the students that sign up for this class would, we would anticipate going into a Gemini US 11th grade course, which is an 11th grade course, where they would receive college credit through FLCC. So this, this course would set them up with the skills that they need in order to be successful in that course, maybe a year ahead of time, so that they go in very well prepared. This is just an overview of the units of study for the course. These units all align with standards and themes for the high school social studies And so, why? Why do we want to have this course for our schools? As mentioned before, it's designed for students who have done well in their freshman year, and they're looking for opportunities to challenge themselves. This course would replace the course that we lost, offered in the past, with AP world history. In reviewing some historical map, we saw that the AP world history course was really just not the best fit for what our students need. At the end of the AP world history class, students take an exam, and their success on that exam aims whether they get college credit for it or not, so they have to score a three or better. And historically, for the last five years, only 21.5% of our students taking that exam have earned the college credit. It's a sizable fee to take that exam, and we just felt like it's not preparing our students for college level courses the way that we wanted to. If we went radical and on the route, have them take this class, set themselves up for success, so that in 11th grade, they can take the Gemini course to earn the college credit through FLCC. We would use summer curriculum time to make sure the course is prepared, and there's no additional expense to offering this course. We don't need a different staff or any other bunch of expensive textbooks or anything like that. So we really just feel like this course would be the best fit for the needs of our students and prepare them with skills to be successful.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Oh, you're over there.
Could I ask a question? How do you get into such a course?
So, the process for scheduling occurs kind of a multi-step approach. So, teachers meet with students, they have a conversation about recommendations for the next year. So students in 9th grade, we meet with their teacher partway through the year, and they have a conversation about, here's something that you might want to consider. So the teacher could make a recommendation, say, you know, maybe consider taking the honors course next year, since like you've done well, or you have an interest in social studies. That's followed up by a conversation between the student and the council. They can have another conversation about what they best, involved in that conversation, and then the student will make a decision about whether they, that was something they wanted to try.
And I think, and on the student transcript, when they get to be seniors and are looking for colleges, will have a special designation, like H.
It would be designated with the name of the course, so they're happy.
If I'm a new student coming into North Rose Will, and I, I enter in October, I'm a really good student, I love social studies, how can I get into it then?
We wouldn't, if a student wants to challenge themselves, we would always support that.
Oh, I see. Oh, I'm waiting here where you were answering for.
I really just wanted you to slide.
Ah.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep, please. We would, later on tonight, we would ask you to vote on accepting this course, and it would be implemented this fall. So that is the question that was just asked.
Thank you.
Can we come take the course? It sounds pretty interesting.
We'll give you the correct course.
Next, Megan Holade, can you give us an overview of our summer programs this year?
So we were very excited to be able to invite students on campus this summer and offer a variety of summer programs to meet their in-person needs. We did not do a virtual option, as we found that we really want to engage as many students as possible in person, being that virtual was difficult for so many students, as we went through this whole year last year. So here's the program offerings that we had, now had this summer, and now we went to each one a little bit more in depth. But as you can see, we had a kindergarten through 6th grade summer school that was held at North Rose Elementary School. A 7th through 12th summer school, that was a voted program that we teamed up with Brent Creek and Clyde, that was held at Clyde this year. We had expanded school year program, that's our program for our students with disabilities, and we kept that here at the end of the district this summer. We had LIFT, which was for 7th through 12th grade, and that was at our high school. We planned for Cooper Academy, but we were not able to get that up and running, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that, that was supposed to be at our high school this summer. We had Kinder Camp, which was a kindergarten group camp, that was at our elementary school, and then we were able to host driver's education for our students at our high school. So, our first program that ordered the highlight is our K6 summer school. This had an academic portion and enrichment portion. It was, our kindergarten through 6th graders were eligible to come. We had two different sessions, three weeks each, so that way we were able to get as many students in as possible. In the past, they had run just one session of five to six weeks, but this way we felt we could get more students in and still do that social thing, to make sure we're keeping everybody safe. So we were able to service 139 students with this program, and the academic portion focused on ELA math, and some interventions for students based on their input data, and we were able to really target some of their needs. And then, the really, really fun part of the program was the enrichment portion. You can see the many different things that students were able to interact with each day they were there this summer. Of course, Mr. Poole came in, he's always a favorite with the students, he's a literacy volunteer, they had animal rock stars come in, and then there were some field trips as well. And really, all of this was made possible by teachers who were willing to work this summer and provide the opportunities for our students. The next program I highlight is our 7th through 12th summer school. As I said, this was hosted at Clyde this year through a Volsey's shared program. We had 20 students from 7th grade free attend, and they had to focus on math, English, social studies, and the social emotional piece. That social emotional piece was a new addition to the program this year. We really felt when we were planning it, that that was something we needed to focus on. Many of these students had been virtual students, are only attending two days a week throughout the year, and we really wanted to try to build those connections and reach that one school. So the social emotional piece was a big focus. And then, this was a 9th through 12th grade program, but whoever woke it did not have any 12th graders that needed to attend. So we had 9th through 11th graders, 40 students attend, and we were able to recover 75 courses and accrue 21 courses for students. So that was a positive thing for those students. Separate from that program, there was a built-in alternative learning center for students who might not have really qualified for this program, and they were able to recover qualified to the program. And very exciting news is that every North Rose student who was enrolled in the course that would normally have a Regents exam earned consumption status. So since they passed the course this summer, they got credit for the Regents, even though there were no summer Regents. And then we did have one August graduate who accrued three classes over the summer to earn her diploma. And then we had our expanded school year program. We had 20 students that were part of this program. In this program, we worked on individualized education plan goals, the students got to swim, we worked on life skills and job skills, some of our oldest students actually worked in the cafeteria to help with meals this summer, and they got a lot of fun doing some of the big theme things, and some of the different enrichment activities that were at the elementary school as well. And then this, this was at our high school. We did welcome Clyde students to this program as they were going to be offering it in Clyde, and it falls under the same grant, the 21st century grant. So we had 18 Clyde students attend and 53 North Rose Will get students, and you can see there was just so many activities for students to come and engage in and have a great time this summer, as well as some field trips to there. So this is our Cooper Academy. This was a program that teachers were really interested in getting on again, and some of you may remember, we had it a few years ago, and it really targeted students that were coming into 9th grade, who were at risk, that we really wanted to build relationships and connections with in order to get them engaged in high school, and really try to motivate them to come to school and be a part of the school community. This year, we want to target 9th and 10th graders, since our incoming 10th graders didn't get to have a normal year last year, and about 30 students were nominated to be part of this program. Out of the 30, 10 students confirmed that they were able to come, and unfortunately, the week that the program occurred, we had one student show. So we are not giving up, we are going to continue looking at that list of students. We do have mentor teachers assigned to them already that we're going to work with them this summer, and they're going to follow them throughout the school year, make sure they're making connections, they have special events planned for those students throughout the school year, so you can still try to really connect with them, and we're hoping to be able to get this program up and running for next summer. And Kinder Camp. So we wanted to target students who are incoming kindergartners that did not attend our UPK programs. Our UPK kids know the building, they kind of know the routines, but students that attended preschool and other places really are familiar with it. So, we were able to have 14 students attend, all students who did not attend our school before, and they, some of them got to ride the bus, they just went through kind of the routines of the day to kind of get used to what it's going to be like when they come to kindergarten, they got to experience meeting the meals here, and they got to learn about the different specials that they'll have, and see familiar faces of people that they work with when they come, they learn to walk in the halls, so all those little skills that you usually work on the first, first few weeks of school, they had a sneak peek at, and I have a good authority that they all fall asleep on their first day. And then we did have practice education. This was a Volsey's program, but we had someone that was right here, and North Rose Will get providing it. We decided that virtual class would be the best option, because we did have limited seats as far as, we wanted students that could drive, because it was limited to just two students in a car this summer. So we did have in-person driving, we had 16 student slots, and we were happy to be able to offer that to our students this summer. Any questions? It wasn't this summer, yes?
I was very impressed with the course recovery, the credit recovery. That is the sole subversion report for those particular kids who are little travel. Should be publicized. This is great.
Nice to see all of this going on this summer. Great. Thank you. We come now to our public access. There's no one here. There's no one. No one's powered. We'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. A motion, please, put this consent agenda on the floor to approve. Tina and Paul. Any questions? Discussion? Paul?
I have a question on page four E.
Four?
I'm sorry, it's four F. Four F. Approval of the personal development plan.
Page two?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Approval of the personal development plan?
So I don't really have too many questions. My initial question is actually, is this an internal plan or does this go out to the state or to other organizations?
So the plan actually itself gets posted on the website as soon as the board approves it. And then we sign a form and send it off to state ed, acknowledging that this is up on our website and it's accessible. And if they have any questions regarding our plan, they certainly can always reach out to us and let us know what their questions are and we can get back to them.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I'm on the plan. Mr. President, I don't want to pop down here if you want to remind me. If we could just go to page seven. I just have a recommendation before we approve. Actually, you don't even need to go. It's a matrix or it's a listing of personnel. Could we just have a, I'm looking at the mic here. Could we just have a general person's agreement that we can update that and we send it off to the district?
These are the people that worked on it at the end of last year to get it ready for this year.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't understand.
On page seven of the plan, the list of names are the people that worked on it at the end of last year to get it ready for this year.
Okay, so it's not the personnel that are on it this year?
No, it's the people who had, might have to get our shared stakeholders input on it. And so at the end of last school year, they worked at the leadership council where to develop this plan.
Okay, that helps me understand more. Then, no need.
Hey, good. Anyone else? The consent agenda goes through page six. Okay. If you have any other questions, all in favor of approving consent agenda? A motion is carried. We come to page six, number five. A motion to. All right, is there the appoint the social work? Yeah, so. Number five, appoint the social work intern. A motion to approve, please. Isada and Linda? Discussion? All in favor? Oh, it's a roll call? Oh. Okay. Roll call, thank you. Linda, yes. John? Isada? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Do you have good news for the board tonight?
I think everyone's pretty worried. Probably the best good news we've got is that 11 North is open. So that was a front page on our Lakeshore News. I also, I just think it's really good news and I'm pleased for our district. We do have a professional development plan and we have a district-wide school safety plan. And those things are really helpful to know that not only do we speak about it, but we actually have a legitimate plan going forward, how we're going to accomplish those things. Lastly, I'd just like to, for some of the, I guess, some of the new teachers have gone. You all know that I like to highlight students who have departed from the North Rose School District that are still doing well. And for the SUNY, Marshall, Gainesburg, we have, like, here at the county, from Volka and FLCC, Henry Deneau, Paula Gant, Michelle Williams, and Matthew McCarthy all on the deeds first. So that avoids all those North Rose Volkit graduates, except for me. Thank you.
Well, I think it's a congratulations in order to the administration who, everybody in the staff who put together that open house and cutting the ribbon ceremony at Love Garden. I was very impressed in overhearing the people walking through highlighting how clean it looked, how light it looked, how much light there was in the building. I didn't hear anyone have a negative comment. And if all those people went out and talked to people, I think it's a plus for our community, school community. And your speech was amazing. It's really, I'm serious about it. And I think Facebook covered it as well. The information was on Facebook with a multitude of pictures. So it was a good thing for our community.
We did one, and there's so many people here that bear that mind. And I'd like to have this, this. We'll land to the superintendent update.
Thank you. I'll be brief. You know, as you're aware, you know, up until about two weeks ago, there were really no plans for guidance coming from the state as far as reopening. So my colleagues around the county, we've been meeting regularly with Diane Devlin, the director of the Department of Health for Wayne County. The Wayne County Superintendent's group, Dr. Ramos from Wayne, Trigger Lakes, Volcans, collaborated over the last several weeks to come up with plans to reopen. And if you were to look around the county, I'm pretty pleased to say that 11 school districts and the Volcans plan are all very similar. Obviously, they're differentiated based on populations we serve. But over at their right, you'll see a little blurb on our plan. Tina, if you could click on the hyperlink, it'll bring it up. Can you, it's the blue, the blue one, can you take the cursor to the leadership website? I think that'll bring it up. But our school reopening plan can be found on our website if that's not accessible right now. You know, so we're pretty pleased with the effort that your administrative staff has put together in terms of making sure our students are back in session five days a week. We are hearing that by the end of the week, there's likely going to be a mask mandate coming down from our new governor. She's been very adamant that she's going to support school districts and take a little bit of the pressure off of local decision makers because of the amount of pushback from people one way or another, whether they're for masks or again, that she's basically saying one of the first decisions she's going to make is to support school districts with their plan. Our plan's bound on the website. You'll see that there's a question and answer session. Again, our administrative staff internally, I think we've dedicated three meetings or four meetings to making sure our docs are in row. And then the questions and answers that our community have are answered and put out there. And we've actually created a separate link for questions specifically relating to school reopening. So this year, the one major difference between this year's plan and last year's is there is no hybrid offering. You're either in person or you're homeschooling. And that's just based on the fact that we feel like we can educate them in a very safe and orderly fashion. And we'll deal with situations as they arrive. Last year, you'll recall, there were some temporary pauses where we did have to quarantine people. And there were times where we actually had to quarantine or push a building to fully remote construction. And that may mean something that the governor decides that we need to offer up. But until that time, right now, the plan is five days a week with masks as required by PRR and by state ed at that point in time. And certainly, as I said, we'll address situations that they come up. The one thing we take great comfort in is we had no evidence of schools spread last year, which means that our staff did a fantastic job. Our cleaners did a great job cleaning. Our bus drivers did a great job standing tight in their buses. Our teachers did a great job with that. And our administrators were fed fast in their approach to making sure protocols were followed. So ladies, you can just go back up to the slide. Don't worry about it. Okay, so as you said earlier tonight, you had 17 of our 21 prospective candidates here tonight. You know, there are still four open positions that we have to fill. So 17 out of 21 of the positions for our instructional staff and support staff as far as OT, PT have been filled. So we have four remaining positions out there. But as you saw by tonight's crowd of teachers, we have a great group of people coming in to serve the students in North Rose Volka. We're extremely excited about partnering them up with our returning staff. We feel like we're in really good shape for a very good year. You know, one thing that I think that we didn't highlight is, but I know you met our new preschool program teachers. We have a new third three-year-old program that's the first year in existence here. So last week, on Thursday, Megan was able to call 18 families and allow them to share in the good news. They've been accepted through the lottery process for our three-year-old program at school. And we're opening up a third section of our four-year-old pre-k program on site. So we're ecstatic about the opportunity to bring those students and get them afterwards needed to the learning environment. And we're pretty pleased with what we're going to be able to provide our students and our community because there's a component of that that takes the burden off a parent when it comes down to making sure their students are in a setting where they don't have to worry so much about what's going on during the course of the day when they're dropped out here. And we know we have great daycare providers in our community. But the fact that they can ride to school with an older brother or an older sister and attend, you know, the three-year-olds will be in for two and a half hours a day. And our four-year-olds get right into the regular routine. We're pretty excited about what that program's going to bring to our students. And then lastly, it's on the slide, but it'll be out in your mailbox. And shortly, the district calendar is going to be shipped out tomorrow. So we're excited to show you the pictures and the themes associated with our strategic action plan and our character development. There it is on the second page right there. So those are on their way. Again, it's a full-blown calendar with a lot of district dates that are on there. And then there will be a corresponding newsletter that goes home with all the pertinent information for families to be sent to them. Other than that, we're excited about new teacher orientation. Looking forward to welcoming our staff back next week. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's kind of a new year. Any questions, Paul?
Mike, did you want any of us to counter teacher orientation?
In terms of. In terms of the teacher orientation, they're pretty booked. But in terms of next week, the opening, by all means, we'd invite any board member who wants to attend the opening ceremonies with our staff back next week. But I think in terms of actually the new teacher orientation, they're pretty mobile. Tomorrow, they're actually going out on a scavenger hunt. They're actually going out into the community where they're going to be driven around. We have designated stops throughout the community to interact with certain businesses, certain residents. They're actually eating lunch tomorrow with our rotarian. So that's something that we started last year. So rather than try to give you information of where to meet them, I just think your best bet would be to look forward to next week and participate in that way. And again, that would be on Wednesday, the first. And actually, that's a good reminder. Two o'clock is when the staff will come together. But I'd also like for our Board of Education to stop by and take a picture as a collective group as well, if you're all available. We have a photographer coming up to get our staff badges for security purposes. It'd be nice for our collective board to get a picture if they're able to make it. That is here at the high school. Mr. Matthews is trying to keep the middle school all to himself. Now that it's opened up, you might have noticed that he came in. He actually was doing another meet and greet tonight with seventh and eighth graders, I believe. And on Thursday, he's got fifth and sixth graders coming in. So he's been hustling. And we're going to give him a break next week and let him just go and sit in the audience and participate in that way.
I did have a question about the five days a week. So last year on Wednesdays, we did the big, like, deep cleaning.
Yeah.
How are we going to, how are we going to do the cleaning thing this year?
Well, right now, the protocols as far as the safety are concerned have changed a little bit. But I know in terms of Mr. Bondo's staff and then working with the teachers, we're going to continue to work to make sure that we're providing them with the materials and sanitizer. And we won't respond in that way until we have a particular outbreak. But I know that we hired additional staff to go on during the day. And I would envision that we would keep those people on that would hit the high-touch areas. Last year, you know, we had bus drivers that were looking for extra responsibilities during the day that would go in and hit the high-touch areas. Actually, Mr. Prince, Mr. Bondo, and the team have been busy securing more cleaning staff. So we've had a very good output in terms of hiring cleaners. I think we're going to be getting some people together for the next round of approvals with the board. And we're actually working on the next steps of what those protocols will look like. But I would envision a team effort again. Teachers, support staff, and whoever's got two capable hands as far as spraying those high-touch areas and making sure we're continuing to sanitize. Your Board of Education members, if you have your hands better, a bottle and a rag would definitely give you one. Thank you. Give it up.
At your seat, you do have a list of upcoming events in an outline, September 1st, please.
Tina will be giving you a monthly event calendar. So you do know what's going on. And if you can attend, some of those things will be most welcome. At this time, the board needs to go to executive session to discuss the history of a specific employee. A motion to John and Linda. All in favor? All in favor? Motion here.